My blind shovel. Send them my way when you wrap up. What was it?
That one should go with the sign and stuff. Hi, hang on two seconds.
Should we have to talk about it?
You have to talk about it, yes.
It's supposed to be beautiful, right?
You're holding?
Did it get dropped off in the market?
Really? Did it? Good.
That's such a crazy.
We should have a little breathing sometime. A little time. Push that too.
To the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Send your shit.
Oh, I'm sorry. Tonight we have myself, Amy Greek, Dr. Michael, Ed Spiker, and our assistant, Jeff Junior. And we have minutes. Did you guys get the minutes to review?
I haven't.
They're in there. While they're doing that. She's gonna have to do this one. Do you want to read this one? This is one for you guys to just talk about that. We're basically redoing the MS 232. Okay. For the DRA. Yep, it's just for you guys to discuss. There's nothing. Okay. Thank you. Good. Ed, did you move it?
Got all but the last one.
Oh, I'm sorry. They're all upside down. If you close the folder and open it again, it will start at the beginning. I said if you close the folder and start again.
I read books backwards. It's their reference book.
Okay. Get the answers first.
Well, no, they put the heavy stuff in the beginning. If you catch it in.
It's all good.
Yeah.
He takes this one down one.
Last one, too.
Doesn't account for sidewalk and things they use daily to get to the shed. Plus, it's above beyond the shed. That's why they update. That's why they update.
Oh. I just make sure you saw this one. The handsome one. High five. Going out this week to get that started. Finally.
It's good though.
It is good. Stakes. Which one? Who's the second one?
Everything in the blue folder.
It's in the blue. Oh, there it is. I'm sorry. No, no, no. Is it supposed to be in this one? The signature required. Maybe not signatures. No, I think I just put it in the wrong folder. I apologize. That one goes in there.
It's only me.
Yes. That was Melissa's fault. Hundred percent. That was Melissa's fault. All that work. You can yell at me later.
Well, it's no. It's like this. It's Russell doing all that. Whatever the others of us can get done.
Oh, I see.
So it's like she's taking a major burden off of you.
I know she is. Trust me, I know. But then I'm spreading it between all of you. So we have an email from Primex about cyber liability coverage. And here requesting some information from us. They need the total budget. I don't know.
Yeah. We do a calendar year. So it'll be this. I think we can get that to be in there.
Okay.
Are you tied in with that computer? Is that computer tied in with that one?
This one is not.
Yeah, okay. Well, we should have that on that one.
Okay. So it's. So they're asking for the.
Down here.
Total budget.
Yeah, because we go from the first to the first.
We can't hear anything.
Yeah, we're going with that year. It goes first to the first, not fiscally.
Okay.
That's what they wanted there. They need those two years, twenty-two and twenty-three.
And where do I find that?
Should be in the tax records on the computer.
In the tax.
Yeah. If not, the book, I will.
The state of Hampshire has now opened up where we can do electronic payments. So all we have to do is fill this out and sign it, if you want to do that.
Motion, we do it.
What's that?
I make a motion, we do it.
Electronic payments regarding what?
Someone said sending a check. They can send.
Sure. I'll second.
All's a favor. I want you to tell me where to sign the, Melissa, because it's kind of. This is vendor and stuff. I am.
You want it?
I am.
Okay.
You're the company authorized signer.
Yes.
Okay. And then I'll authorize it.
I just need you liable for everything.
Thanks. So with the cash street changing that, we're going to change on the MS 232 to revise the whole process. So we take that right out, the warrant right out. So that's. Do we have to do a motion or anything for that? I think you just have to agree that we're going to go into the 232 and say that the motion was declined. And so that it takes the. Correct.
Meeting minutes.
Yep. And then it will be taken out. Amendment. Amendment.
Well, the first one came to my head.
All right. Melissa's going to fill this form out. It's a communications form with a road agent, emergency contacts, stuff like that. She doesn't know who to report for, the town manager administrator. Why? Do you like this role, my name? I wanted verification. Now you have your answer. Well, wait. No. Um, who's the emergency management director?
We need to check because that used to be Willis Baloo. And I don't know if he's going to continue because he stepped down from the planning board. I hadn't heard anything from him as far as that. So I will check Willis.
Thank you.
And see if he's still doing it.
Okay. That's your job. Thank you. Eversource is coming through. I'm sure everybody has seen the big JCR trucks replacing all the poles. So beginning June, the first of June, they'll be in. They will be northern portion of Circuit of Morpheus. This will entail new pole sets, equipment on the poles, hardware upgrades, new conductor wire. This project is being completed in the pursuant of better reliability for our residents in the area and should run into the November twenty-three timeframe.
Does it say if they're going to go three-phase? Because if they go three-phase, I have two people ready to jump on solar for solarizing Croydon. Because we have no three-phase in town.
I don't. I would say it. The top.
I know. I didn't. She didn't read anything. Very cool. Well, let's hope it is.
The new Sexton that was approved, company approved Sexton by the trustees is JFT Wilte. And I know that they have started the cemeteries. And I appreciate them. And we have a dump, an NARA thing. Teach me about it. Tell me.
Okay. This is. That's a lifesaver. Anyway. Every time we do something that requires NARA, which is a membership for an organization, through New Hampshire does all the recycling and stuff in this area. In fact, they do a little broader. This one in particular was we dump it our annual dump for glass. Okay, so you get the report, glass PGA. We take it over to New London. We had seven and a half, seven point two tons. Forty dollars a ton. Our price is two eighty-eight. Now, that seven point two tons would have cost us way more than this.
Yeah, that's math.
Right. And this was all kinds of glass. It was ceramic windows, everything but safety glass. But every time something goes through NARA, cardboard, the glass, you get one of these.
Okay.
Sent to us.
Okay, so. One more. Let me get a drink if I want one. Dear fellow residents of Croydon, the town of Croydon is seeking passionate, dedicated, seeking passionate and dedicated individuals to fill a recent vacancy in the Board of Trustees and Cemeteries. The Board of Trustees and Cemeteries plays a vital role in managing funds balance, maintaining our cemeteries, and ensuring a peaceful and respectful upkeep. If you have a genuine interest in local history, a sense of responsibility towards preserving our heritage, and a commitment to serving our community, we would love to hear from you. Whether you're a seasoned professional or simply an enthusiastic resident looking to make a difference. Your unique skills and perspectives are valuable assets and we appreciate that. We appreciate it. Responsibilities of the Board of Trustees and Cemeteries include collaborating with fellow trustees to oversee the cemetery operations and maintenance, developing and implementing strategies to maintain and grow fund balance, work closely with local organizations to volunteer to ensure the respectful care of our cemeteries, engaging with the community, addressing concerns, and maintaining open lines of communication. If you're interested in applying, please email your letter of intent to townclerk@greek-nh.com by June sixth. As a reminder, all candidates must be resident of Croydon. Sincerely, Paul Michael Francis. And I have. To the select board, I am interested in the trusted position that has just been vacated. I'm very interested in learning that position. Thanks for your time, Brenda Williams. So we have one person stepping up for that position. And then I know we have an opening for the. Health officer. So, and I know Andy Aliata has expressed interest. And I also have this. Dear select board members, I'm trying to do today to inform you of my interest in the health, in the position of the health officer for the town of Croydon. I have a bachelor of science in nursing degree with a minor in psychology. I have been working as a nurse in this area for almost ten years. Previously, I was a supervisor for two inpatient units at DHMC. One specialized in thoracic vascular and transplant surgeries, the other a post-op step component. I am currently practicing as a school nurse at an elementary school in Claremont. I have lived in Croydon, Hampshire for almost eight years. This town holds a place in my heart. This is where I got married and started my family. This is the town my kids grew up in. I would like to take a position as, take the position as health officer to keep Croydon a safe place for my community as well as my family. Thank you for your consideration. Callie. And I'd like to wait for Andy's as well. Andy's letter as well.
Right.
And I would honestly like to discuss with them. Is this a page or?
I mean, that'll work. But you can find the requirements for it online. There's RSAs for it, general court. As.
I'm just wondering if.
It would be best to do a ninety-one and talk to him personally. There, I mean, we make the appointment in public, but do an actual discussion with him in private.
Sure. Okay. So how do we? Just wait till you get the other letter, then?
I mean, you can set it up for her to come in and talk to us or, you know, in the next meeting. And if his letters comes in, I can respond right back and get him to come in too. And if not, you know.
Well, what I'm wondering is if the position can be held by two people because of their difference. He's very EMS, ambulance, very, you know, emergency services type.
Well, it's Matt going over the criteria. I don't know myself going over the criteria of the RSAs and stuff. I think a licensed health professional be a little more in tune with the task.
Okay.
We can discuss that with both. And I'll actually do a little more digging and see if two people can hold it.
Okay. And then we have hybrid workshops coming up. If you're interested, want to look at these.
Municipal association. I can tell you any note.
Yeah. So update on the. Update on the Luna Lake property. So we have finally gotten a quick claim deed, and we're going to move forward on this so we can close. So we have to sign this quick claim deed right now and have it.
Quick like a bunny. The Luna Lake property. We can finally get that back on the tax rolls and collect it. And hopefully they put something in, we can collect more.
So now you can go back to the attorney and schedule the closing. Okay. She wants to hear from you tomorrow, so I will call her first thing.
I have several more things.
Say I have this too. Melissa, where's that voucher? Sorry. That's okay.
Okay, that one letter represented the amount.
Yeah.
And fifty cents. So that's accurate. Right there is accurate. So yeah, she can just generate her own net.
All right.
That's the voucher lady. You don't give the money without her.
Okay. I want to remind everybody to register your dogs ASAP. Because things are going to get real, say.
Civil forensics and such.
Yes.
I got a couple of things. One, as spring has turned around, we do the annual purge of the transfer station. Carl got rid of hundred and sixty-two tires and two tractor trailer tires. And the next day, somebody brought in fifty tires. Anyway. With that, last that we talked about earlier, and he's coming up on a cardboard. We also got the electronics picked up last week. So the last thing we have are refrigerators left, but I'm trying to hold off on them until July or so.
That's a big deal, right?
Yeah, yeah. And, well, they're all kind of. But the way we do it, it saves individuals. Secondly. A new resident came in today to find out some information on the town, what to do and tax, all that stuff. And it gave Paul an idea that we should have kind of a welcome to Croydon packet. And these are some of the things he thought might be good to have in it. And it's something that we could, you know, I mean, most of this stuff we could have framed on our paper with, you know, different programs.
Well, that's so great. I love it.
I make a motion. We accept Paul's idea after he reads it.
All's a favor.
Hi. Do it, too. Do it too?
What is it?
Brush up on, you know, school, dog licensing, homeschool options, fire department, so.
Soon they have a real listing for internet. I said, soon they have a real listing for internet.
Just a brief thing as far as the internet goes, you mentioned it, I'm going to reach out, just see what the turnaround time for, assuming it's all right in the future, for our link, and see what that may be, get that on the radar, maybe the end of June or so.
Looking at pricing?
Just looking at pricing on that one since, not Comcast, but Consolidated isn't going to be through here anytime soon, as far as the fiber, and eventually the October deadline for the meeting, everything, as far as putting town meetings online. So I mean, it'd be good to at least get an idea of pricing, what our options are as far as that, for high speed. I have reached out to the Claremont CCTV folks about the offer of equipment and see what they have to offer. I've got to touch base again with them and see, just get more clarification on what's actually on the table. Other than that, nothing new on my end. Actually, as far as grounds maintenance for behind the school and the church, is that anything that we delegate? There's a tree down behind the school. I don't know if that's something we
Yeah, and it was out front here.
Same person did the cemetery.
All right, I guess we're going to have to add that to their list, huh? Listen, I drive by and I have to tell myself not to mow it. You want to mow it, so.
Yeah, that's part of it. It's pretty much all town.
That'll be taken care of tomorrow. I'll make sure of it. Oh, the bridge payment, Brighton Road Bridge, the payment has been sent, so has been created and waited till the end of the week. Yes.
Light bulb.
Light bulb.
The fire department talked to Comcast and got the fiber thing. Maybe we can pull municipal string of Comcast and get them to put fiber in here, because it's up right there. Okay, rewind.
Fidium.
Yeah, no, they have Comcast.
Coniston?
Oh, no.
Camp Coniston.
Oh, Camp Coniston, yeah. No, the fire department got Comcast in using EMS type pole, we'll say that, and were able to get it. Being that we're this close to the line, there's a possibility, I'll do some checking and see if we can pull some kind of municipality string to get Comcast to run into here. The line's right there. And if they can break it for the fire department.
I've got no issue, but I'm under the understanding the fire department's basically paying out the year for that, like hundreds of, hundreds a month, from what I understand.
Well, not the data they're getting, I can see why, but, you know, things like that can be brought up after it's been researched and there's actual numbers, and if it's even possible, because they had a very EMS type leverage. We don't have that, we just have the municipality. So we'll see how that goes from there.
So is that something you want to reach out to them for?
I already said I would.
Okay, now, Paul?
Yeah. Hi, everyone. Paul, we're the town clerk here. So one of the things that we had an opportunity to go over during the training was the New Hampshire City and Town Clerks Association and the New Hampshire Tax Collectors Association's Joint Certification Program. It's a certification program that takes four years. Its cost is roughly, I can get more specific, roughly about $300 a year for four years for certification for town clerks and tax collectors, and I would ask that you guys would make a motion on whether or not that the town would cover the cost of that, that training program.
Can I ask you a question?
Absolutely.
Where are you going to be in 10 years?
10 years?
But I'll give you a benefit here.
Is it a, is it a required, something required for your training?
It's not at all required, it's completely, I would consider it a development.
Yeah.
I make a motion, we deny.
Yeah.
Second.
All those a favor?
Aye.
For denial?
Yes.
All those to none?
Right.
Sorry.
I just wanted to make clarification on that.
Aye.
Aye, okay.
Thank you for your consideration.
My pleasure. Anything else?
Who's your hesitation on 10 years to do it?
Sitting right here, even more great.
Now I'd like to open the mic up. Anybody have anything?
This is regarding the Proton email. So, let's go, let's start from the beginning. Our objective was to allow the town to have email addresses that utilize the town currently has our domain name, which is hosted by a company, tuecows/enom.com. I don't think these names are.
Did you say TuCows?
It's, yeah, T-U slash cows. Slash, however, we currently have no organized central email service that will allow us to have emails for all of the town, for each individual person going through our homepage. So we can either purchase an email service from a company, which will allow, and a lot of companies will offer those services, but the domain is our advantage by the company, we could go through that company to get these type of email services. Or you can purchase something from like Proton email, or you can go out to Google and get it for free. The TuCows EDOM will do all of this, they'll do the, so there's a gift per email for mailbox, $21 a gift per mailbox, and it's based on the size of the mailbox, so how much data you can have, 10 gigabytes, 25 gigabytes, 50 gigabytes. To give you a fixed dogs a year per mailbox, you would go through where we already have our domain server, and they would, they would do it all for you. They would give you the account, they would give you the protection of the account, they would give you all of the passwords, you would be able to open up PDMs and web documents and know that you have the safety that's allowed there. They have spam filters, you can do all of that. If we do, and if somebody needs a border condition, they would shut down that, try to figure out who's going to manage it, who's going to get those emails, the company takes care of it all. It's not a volunteer trying to do it.
Right.
We can do this all for free through Google, the same way. But we can do it a lot less through the domain that we already have than the Proton email. So that's what I would have on.
Now, what about the Gmail?
Email alias is so, someone might info that, right, dash, NH.gov.
All right, so the .gov has nothing to do?
Has nothing to do with it, so that's a completely separate endeavor.
Okay.
This is setting up.
So whatever we do here doesn't affect the .gov?
And if anything, having that in place first before we apply.
Okay, all right, good.
For free, I'm doing the website, I'm going to continue to do the website, but I'm not sure that played out in the time costs.
You're saying for Gmail, right? If we did the Gmail one?
For free.
I don't, I don't want to, I don't want to put that burden on you. I would rather do the one that's already linked to what you just suggested.
All right, for, for a cost of $6.
Per email?
Per email, per.
Right.
So I mean, what's the total cost, what's the total amount of emails that we would need for town? And?
16.
16?
At a minimum, I'm still more than 15.
That's horrible, right?
It would have to come out to 120 a year at 20 emails.
Yeah. Do all the
It would be all board members. And actually, two of them are redundant, it's probably a little less.
So we could have like 10 emails at the smaller gig or smaller space, whatever it is, and then
Main.
The main ones with
Should we go with the?
TuCows, TuCows.
TuCows. Thank you, Kim.
Appreciate you. There's Amy. I'll give this right back to you.
Quick side note, the planning board is moving ahead with the items for the specialty to go to the March Meeting. They don't have to be worried for a warrant for there, they won't be able to be done in the special meeting. There's going to be two hearings for each of the setups, minimum. If somebody has changed the stuff and may vote to a third, all that's generally covered with the amount that we kept out. There will be a need for a joint planning, select, or zoning meeting type deals to go over everything and solidify. You're actually going to have to do part of the presentation, can, on the date of it, but it won't be like next week, I guarantee.
Okay. Will that need to be posted in the paper?
Yeah, it'll have to be posted 15 days before the meeting, all that, all of those in the paper, it'll have to be posted regularly, so the hearings will have to be posted in the newspaper. This is, this is not the bill. Oh, that's what I wanted to bring up. Don't get old. Last year, voted to increase the tire prices. The sheet of price, however, this is, or when we let me know how much, amount, we can take a vote on it, if we don't, we can just print up the new sheet with the amount.
On cash?
Well, all I need is a gun, sir.
Anybody got anything else?
My bugaboo here, mic goes. And I'll keep coming here to, everybody uses it with this.
You want to be able to hear us from the door?
You can tell the difference between if I have it here and if I'm standing back here.
Yeah.
And Joe, I, sitting on this side of the room, I can hear you a lot better when you don't use the microphone, but the people sitting on that side, especially if you're talking to Amy.
Yeah.
You have, and there's also a lot of, I don't know, just kind of sigh, talks about something, and I don't know, maybe you don't think it's important enough for us up here to know what's going on, but we can watch the YouTube period and happiness, and we can hear all the things that's going to be here. So I just ask you, speak up, speak into the microphone a little bit more. And, and one other question I guess.
No mic drop.
So, were to approve spending $90 for a workshop for moderators, I mean, the last, the last time I went, I mean, I brought in a lot of people who were first. But I'm not sure if there's a difference between what Paul was asking for and what I might be asking for as moderator, being able to go to the workshop as opposed to be certified, it's, I mean, it's still a workshop.
Well, it's always been in the town, it's always been the way of the town, and that's just, it's done. Workshops come up and stuff, you do it, you get, I mean, if you want to come in and tell us about it, that's, that's fine, everything, you know, they could do it.
Paul asked for, I guess, your approval to be able to get funds to pay that certification for us. You, you made a motion to deny, or any questions?
Yes.
I'm not sure why you need to make a motion to do it, I mean, you know, what you mean to, to move to deny something? So I'm not, what am I?
Go. Go ahead.
It's just procedural, that's all.
Yeah, it's just procedural.
Yeah.
Well, it needs to be official for what it's getting used for, so there has to be a motion and everything else, because it needs to be official, you can't just be, you know, thrown out because of what it's being used for.
Consider the motion, and change the order of that motion, in order to reflect that it was, I'm not asking for it, positive that you guys are like, oh, no, we're just going to make a motion to deny outright. So I think that's what Bruce's, I think it's a motion proper for us to approve Paul's, Paul's training or whatever, and if we go in, if we make a motion to deny it.
Right, we don't want to
You wouldn't necessarily take it and twist it and throw it away, but that's, I mean, we're all working on it, we can do stuff.
I understand what you're saying.
Yeah, no, I think we're, I think we're good.
Yeah.
Just for the record, I need to press Jaster.
Should start sometime this year, but who knows?
They're slated.
Their letter to, their letter to kill last week, by the end of next year, which is how it's done.
So are we just getting it or?
It's free.
It's free to get it in, you have to pay a hundred dollars a month.
If you're referencing for the, for the high speed, okay. Because to be able to schedule to complete until 2025, because of the motion, or because of the Warren article, it has to take place by October, which means there has to be a high speed provider for the town by October. So that means that it would either be the Comcast, Comcast would either have to, have to try to get Comcast, as the fire department did, or Starlink is ready, available, and able to service this area current, at a cost of $90 a month, from what my last vote was. But you have to purchase equipment for $599.
Is this a substitute until, like, stuff comes up?
But it could also be used even after, should the board and the town decide to do so, the Starlink connection wouldn't necessarily be defunct even if Fidium did come here, because it could be a dedicated connection strictly for town officials and for the town clerk. That way there isn't congestion.
Okay, also, you can move the direct, so for whatever reason, we need the internet access at the town or somewhere, we could bring the direct as long as the power, we can have that service, but wherever it's happening, if there was a, if we need an internet access, that direct will still be used wherever, it doesn't have to be the access.
All right, so am I going to trouble even giving direct TV at my place because of trees, this Starlink signaling?
No. Which, right here isn't necessarily an issue.
No, her, her.
She's like, this sounds great.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry. I got it, sorry, bud. So, well, the turnaround, I mean, depending on how much open space you do have, the turnaround for Starlink is roughly four to six weeks, I believe, is what, what it takes to get it in. Having it installed is up to you, but I believe it's relatively painless install. I don't personally have it, but I have numerous people that do, and they did the install themselves.
So anything else? I make a motion, we do it.
Second.
All those a favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Yes, I just finished, I'm all, all right, good. What's that, that? I will follow it up. No, Ed will know, Ed knows everything.